Ms. Boucher, you want to read the next one?
Yes, this is ordinance number 2802, and I'm going to read it as amended, which was in the agenda for this evening. An ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, for the period July 1, 2023, to June 30, 2024, establishing the levy for the general fund for the same fiscal period and establishing the appropriation for the water, sewer, parking authority, city marina, and stormwater funds. Be it ordained by the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that the amounts listed in Schedule A, operating budget appropriations, are hereby appropriated for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024, to fund operations of the city of Salisbury, Maryland. Be it further ordained by the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that the amounts listed in Schedule B, capital project appropriations, are hereby appropriated for capital projects. Be it further ordained by the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that the amounts listed in Schedule C, anticipated grant expenditures, are hereby appropriated for the grants listed, and the mayor is authorized to enter into any necessary agreements or memoranda in order to receive and expend these funds. Be it further ordained that, one, the tax levy be, and the same be hereby set at $1.0332 per $100 of assessed valuation for all real property, at $3.51 per $100 of assessed valuation for all personal property categorized as utilities, and at $2.40 per $100 of assessed valuation for all other personal properties subject to taxation by the city of Salisbury for general fund purposes, including debt service purposes, exclusive of revenues derived from the water and sewer fund for debt service purposes attributed to water and sewer activities. And, two, all taxes levied by this ordinance shall be liens from and after July 1, 2023, and shall be due and payable as specified in Title 14 of the Tax Property Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland as amended. And be it further ordained that additional details concerning the budget, including adjustments made to the mayor's proposed budget to prepare the adopted budget, can be found in the FY 24 Budget Book, which can be downloaded from the city website, and that website address is located in the agenda for this evening. Be it further ordained that we are here tonight for a public comment on this proposed budget ordinance, and that the ordinance shall take effect upon final passage.
Okay, so at this time, I will open the public hearing for ordinance number 2802. If anyone wishes to speak on ordinance 2802, and you have not been sworn in, please stand so that the clerk can swear you in. If you have already been sworn in and you wish to speak, raise your hand, and I will try to go through the audience one by one. Yes. We're not allowed to. This is legally, we have to do, we have to do a public hearing for each one. It's legally, from the state, this is how we're supposed to do it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So getting back to what I had said.
If you wish to speak, you may come back up to the podium and speak for a public hearing.
I'll leave it to you.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on ordinance number 2802? Mr. Taylor? Yeah, we'll get him.
I won't repeat who I am, I hope you remember. Couple things. An earlier speaker pointed out that we didn't get the revised budget data until sometime after 1:00 PM this afternoon, leaving just a little bit over three hours to study it to be able to comment competently. Unfortunately, I had something in the middle of the afternoon, so I didn't have that three hours to peruse it. I had about 15 or 20 minutes. And so I can't really comment in detail. And speakers earlier are very concerned about raising the tax rate. I'm certainly not happy about it, but as I said earlier, I think unfortunately, where the city has placed itself, unfortunately, it's necessary. Yeah, probably some things can be cut out of the budget. I'm not going to go into that. As I said, I really didn't have a whole lot of time to look at it, and it takes a lot of time to do that. But I do have a few questions. I was able to look at it briefly, as I say. First of all, there's an item in there for EMS money from the county. $1,964,000, as I recall, that wasn't in the original proposed budget. I'm guessing, because I don't know, that that has been agreed with the county. I'd like to have an answer to that question, and I think the public would too. Because if that's just a flyer, and that really hasn't been agreed with the county, and the street talk is that the county is prepared to pay a million, and that's it, that's about a $900,000 difference. And we've already got $2.2 million coming out of our reserve funds. That's in the budget. So if that, if it's only a million you get from the county, there's another $900,000 you need right there. So that's one question, and I'd surely like to have an answer to that. That's a concern. The other concern, and I hope that I'm right on this, it looks like the starting salary now for police officers and trainees is $55,000. In the earlier proposed budget, it was 51, I think, and change. I forget the exact number. And I would commend that increase, because the county, I think, has already gone, or if they haven't, they will tomorrow, go to 55,000, starting for deputies. Now, that's, I'm assuming, across the entire spectrum of the pay scale for the police. I'm only looking at the beginning. And I would assume the beginning's going up. Whoops. Well, there's another expense that's needed.
That one will come out of the county's budget.
Yeah. But as I say, if it goes across the whole pay scale, which I assume it does, that's also a good move. Now, that's obviously going to add to the revenue you need. And that's one reason why we have to raise taxes, because we've got to stay competitive with the police. And when the county goes up, unfortunately, we got to go up. It's just human nature. So those are two points. But I want to kind of conclude by picking up on some of the remarks that were made earlier about we've got to find more revenue sources. We've got to stop the Horizon program. It is really just, I was going to call it absurd, but I think maybe the proper word is obscene, to be raising the taxes on everyone else and letting developers be subsidized by tax waivers. That is really improper, and that needs to end. I would ask then, at your meeting on June 12, after you finally do the budget and the other stuff, start talking about getting rid of the Horizon program. It can't be too soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Weisner? The clerk will have to put you under oath. I will remind you, when you go home, you're still under oath when you have to talk to your wife, okay?
Hi, sir. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give us the truth?
I did.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Mike Weisner. I reside at 438 Rolling Road in Salisbury. And I can understand the need for a tax increase. We've had inflation, and everything seems to go up. But I think the, what my concern is, the direction the city's been going the last couple of years, it seems they want to benefit developers and redevelopment, especially in the downtown area, rather than, we're looking after their citizens who vote for them, and the employees that need to have raises to live. I think there's been a lot of tax giveaways, and the multi-millions of dollars, not only Horizons, but also land giveaways, and millions of dollars of valuable assets in downtown Salisbury, that I don't think is a wise use of those properties. And I fear that we've incurred a lot of expenses with these tax rebates, or a lot of them rebates, they have to pay now. And then a couple of years down the road, you're going to be writing checks out to people who paid fees upfront, which are eligible to be refunded to them in full if they complete their projects, and probably most of them will complete, and that'll be another big hit against the budget. But I think the city really needs to prioritize its employees, police fire, EMS, public works, the people that do the work to keep the city safe, keep us functioning, keep the roads working, keep the trash picked up. They need a decent living, they need to be looked after. And I don't think we need to take the money from the taxpayers to pay that when we're in turn giving it to developers, who are not even residents of the city. It just seems the priorities were askew, and I hope that the city decides to stop the giveaways and start having properties pay for themselves. Used to be a saying, when I was a developer, a number of years ago, growth pays for growth. So the people would pay their impact fees if they had to have sewer in order. They'd pay their development fees for any engineering cost or any building permits required. Everybody had to pay their oil costs upfront, so it didn't pass on to the public, the existing tax base. The developers had to pay upfront what they were going to benefit from. But now it seems to be the reverse, the city is gone. And I think we're starting to see the effect of that in this year's budget. And I think in the next few years' budget, you'll also have the same problems with increases in water and sewer, with increases in taxes because of the giveaways that you've already promised. And I think it's time to stop that. And I hope the city reconsider's its decisions and makes prudent moves in the future. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weisner. Would anyone else like to speak on ordinance number 2802? Hearing none, seeing none. I will close the public hearing for ordinance number 2802. Halfway there. Next up is ordinance number 2803. Ms. Boucher?
This is ordinance number 2803, as amended. An ordinance of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, to amend water and sewer rates to increase rates by 10% and making said changes effective for all bills dated October 1, 2023, and thereafter, unless and until subsequently revised or changed. Whereas the water and sewer rates must be revised in accordance with the proposed fiscal year 2024 budget of the city of Salisbury, and the appropriations thereby made and established for purposes of the water and sewer departments. And those rates are set forth in Section 1A, which are the water and sewer rates. And we have a definition section, and those changes are outlined in the strike through and the agenda.
At this time, I will open the public hearing for ordinance number 2803. Anyone wish to speak on 2803 that has not spoken, you will need to be sworn in. Anyone that has already been sworn in, you may speak on this ordinance. Just raise your hand if you would like to speak on it. Yes.
Do I say my name again, or how's this work?
You're fine.
Okay.
We got you.
So I don't, I come up here with my heart. I don't have a script. I don't have anything to go by. I offered you my checkbook to show you that I'm a single person. I'm a responsible person. I pay my bills. But every year, when you see the water bill keep going up, up and up and up and up, and I think to myself, I don't use that amount of money to pay for water. I, I don't, if you go over, you go over. I mean, then you pay that, but to raise it another 10% every, last year, wasn't it 9% or something? And the year before, it was raised again. It just keeps going up. And then, it's my understanding that certain developers don't have to pay for the water or something to that effect, or whatever. And it's like, when does it stop? Please make it stop. This affects you all, too. We've got young people back here probably barely have enough money to put food on the table for their families. And they're here to ask you probably for a raise. I offered you my checkbook to show you that it's either 10% to pay for $17 or $18, or something like that, $17.11 more, starting, what, October 1st, or get dental insurance to clean my teeth. I guess the city water bill wins. Let's not make that happen. Let's work, let's work to get that. Actually, let's do something different. Let's not raise anything. Let's work with what we got, maintain what we got, and then look forward to see what we have in the future that we can possibly do. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on ordinance number 2803? Okay. Ms. Gibson?
Kaye Gibson, Salisbury, Maryland. Hey, you've got me over a barrel again. I don't pay, you cut off my water. I, I can't win. I can come up here and repeat what everyone else has said and keep going at it. It's not going to do me any good. You're going to pass it. You don't care. It feels hopeless. It just feels hopeless. And I feel helpless. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on ordinance number 2803? Mr. Hopkins?
Thank you, Brett Hopkins. I think what we're starting to hear is, it's the minimum bill that might really be offensive. I mean, if you're using a lot of water, big family, that kind of thing, your bills probably should be higher because your consumption's higher, both on the front-end water usage but also on the back-end sewer usage. Perhaps you could adjust that minimum bill down. And then, that difference, so it would become, I guess, a little bit more progressive in the way things are going to be done in terms of smaller families, single people. Their bill could be, you know, $100, $125 a quarter, not, you know, $165, $170, $180. I mean, you're starting to talk $2 a day for water and sewer. That's what $180 is for the quarter. That's getting up there. I mean, $60 a month. I mean, that's real money at some point, right? And then that's what you're hearing. We've hit that point. So maybe, maybe you could consider dropping the minimum bill. It probably wouldn't change too much to the revenue side. It would definitely bring it down, because that's, again, every dollar you take in is coming from somebody. So, but it might help those people that don't burn nearly as much water and sewer. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Anyone else on ordinance number 2803? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing for ordinance number 2803. At this time, we will have a public hearing for ordinance number 2804. Ms. Boucher?
Ordinance number 2804, this is also amended. An ordinance of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, to set fees for the FY 2024, and thereafter, unless and until subsequently revised or changed, whereas the fees charged by the city are reviewed and then revised in accordance with the adoption of the fiscal year 2024 budget of the city of Salisbury. And whereas the amount of the fees, whereas the fee amount set forth in the FY 2024 fee schedule is attached here too and incorporated as Exhibit 1, identify and list all fee amounts to be changed or otherwise assessed by the city of Salisbury for the period of fiscal year 2024 in accordance with the adoption of the fiscal year 2024 budget of the city of Salisbury. And whereas some fee amounts to be charged and otherwise assessed by the city of Salisbury in fiscal year 2023 may have been inadvertently omitted from the FY 2023 fee schedule attached and incorporated as Exhibit 1, and any fee amount not listed in said FY 2023 fee schedule shall be and remain the fee amount set forth in the City of Salisbury Municipal Code. Section 1, the fee amount set forth in the FY 2024 fee schedule, which is attached as Exhibit 1, is adopted by the city, or the council of the city of Salisbury. And furthermore, the fee amount set forth in the FY 24 fee schedule shall supersede the corresponding fee amount set forth in the City of Salisbury Municipal Code until one or more of such fee amounts are subsequently amended. And Exhibit 1, which is the 2024 fee schedule, is attached, and it has been made part of the agenda for comment.
At this time, I will open the public hearing for ordinance number 2804. If anyone wished to speak on ordinance number 2804? None, last call. And I am closing the public hearing for ordinance number 2804. All right, so since this is the first special meeting, and I know we have one individual who would like to make a public comment. If anyone would like to make a public comment on other items or anything you want to make a public comment on, you make, there's a paper to sign up over there on the table and fill it out, hand it to our city clerk, Kim Nichols. And you can do that if you'd like to speak. While our one public comment, Lynn Bratton, again, would like to make a public comment. Ms. Bratton? This is, yes, this is the public comment section. We are done with the public hearing. So everybody that was sworn in, with the exception of Mike Weisner, you are no longer sworn in.
My name is Lynn Bratton. I live at 303 South Boulevard. I am one house down from the stoplight that used to be there on the corner of South Boulevard and Camden Avenue. I have asked for, and have yet to get a response, but I know I get 10 days before I even hear anything, for Freedom of Information Act to look at the repair orders and the work orders for the stoplight. I have asked for the report from the Army Corps of Engineers that was cited in the public notice stating that the site lines were fine at that intersection. I have asked for the report, the other report that was quoted and referenced to in that public document, the press release stating that a study had been conducted, at which time it was deemed that a stoplight wasn't needed. I would like to know who wrote that, how long ago it was written, what their credentials were, what their timeframe was during the study. There are many, many questions. When you say a study was written, anybody can write something and get it printed. You'd like to know the credentials, the timeline, and other details surrounding that. The intersection at Smith Street, at South Boulevard and Camden Avenue is a very difficult intersection to see around. The site circumference is not low enough as normally is approved. There's a retaining wall that is part of the historic district that has been there and was part of the documents when that historic district was established on the corner of Camden and South. There is a hedge that has recently been trimmed back by the homeowner that has assisted in seeing around the diagonal opposite corner. The corner functioned very well for over 50 years with a stop-and-go light. And then it became a stop-and-caution light. And then it became a rumble strip intersection. And then the rumble strips were taken off. And now it has temporary four-way stop signs and a blinking red light all the way around that still has a sign that says "No turn on red." So I guess you can't turn on red. It has a sign that basically blocks one of the stop signs from even being seen. It has a speed thingy, another obstruction on the sidewalk that tells you your speed. And all of those extra items are in the sidewalk and provide additional site problems and additional items that can be run into by a person should they momentarily, you know, not pay attention to the street like everybody should. There are lines that have been painted where now, when I try to cross Camden, heading towards Riverside, I'm literally facing oncoming traffic. There's still a right-hand turn lane on the South Boulevard side. And if it's going to be a four-way stop, that to me means single file, one person after another, not somebody pull up next to me and make a right-hand turn. So I think that's redundant and confusing. I think the painted-over lines, that used to be there, now they've been repainted black. It's an entire, it has the rumble strips on, it has the speed bumps on South Boulevard to slow everybody down. It's a bike lane using the entire street the way we used to use bikes, which has worked, that worked for years. I question the fact that I've been told it's too expensive to put a light back. The light was working until somebody tinkered with it. The light was then changed from blink yellow, blink red, to blink red, red. So there's obviously still electricity going to it, and the reds and the yellows are working. I don't know quite what the problem is. I've been told it's too old to replace, and then you'd have to put up new infrastructure for a $200,000 stoplight. But if it's part of what's needed for public safety, then it needs to be fixed. Just because something is broken doesn't mean it doesn't need to be there. And we need to put the stoplight back. We need to just put it back and leave it alone. And it worked fine. We don't need flashing red lights around a red stop sign that's going to be powered by a solar panel on the pole. It just needs to go back the way it was. And I'm not against progress, but I am pro-safety. Fix the light, please. Thank you.
Lynn? If you want to come up, you can.
I'm not sure what the public comment thing is, but we're talking about roads.
Sure. You can talk about anything you want.
Sure, thank you.
Well. We can't talk about scrap.
Most people, I'm still learning all of this as well, so. I live in Shoemaker Manor, and I've lived there since 2017. And it's my understanding, and I've seen it, they come around in Shoemaker Manor, the city people, and they refill the potholes. It's just like a cancer, just waiting to go again. And in my community, we like to walk. Tons of people walking. You're lucky to not walk into a pothole. And that community's been there, I believe, since 1990, maybe '91. Don't quote me on any of the years. But it's time to repave those roads. And as you come out of Shoemaker Manor onto Shoemaker Drive, going past Parkside High School to the red light there, it's time to repave those roads, too. From the school buses coming out of Parkside onto the roads, people love to walk, and there's just no walkway. It's amazing people haven't gotten hit. So just requesting that you please look into trying to get those repaved, Shoemaker Manor and Shoemaker Drive. So, thank you.
Thank you. Andy, I think pieces of that, that's, pieces of that is county, isn't it? Isn't one of those chop? Isn't one of those chopped up streets?
I think so, yeah.
That's why some spots might not have sidewalks. So, I know that there's, where Shoemaker Park is, there's, there's some houses across the street. I know that those are, a lot of those are in the county. Some of those homes.
One, one property over, so when you go into Shoemaker Manor, one property over is still city. So Shoemaker Manor is.
Shoemaker Manor is in the city.
City, right.
But some of that street coming up to it is, they're county.
It's time to show a little love on those streets.
Yeah.
Please, thank you.
So we will, on those streets, that information, we will forward to the county council so that they're aware, because if it's a county street, where?
Where I'm referring to is Shoemaker Manor, that's all city.
Okay.
One property over from the entrance to Shoemaker Manor starts the county.
Okay.
So, yes, you are correct, Shoemaker Drive is part county.
Yeah.
But I'm referring to the whole, the whole.
Okay. Thank you.
Council President, if I may, we have already started some conversations with the county on those kind of wonky streets that are both ways. So if it's something that's going to be in our schedule or in their schedule, we're going to work together to try to fix it comprehensively, so.
Awesome.
That's on both of our schedules.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments? We will move on to administration comments. Mr. Mayor?
Now, the, I'm not going to go into an explanation for all the questions and comments, and I appreciate all of the comments. All I can say is, you were asking about the, the cost to everybody in this room and the inflation. Well, I just want to remind everybody that the inflation for the, for the city is, is no different than the inflation that you're experiencing. And just to give you an example, on the water sewer rate, the chemicals for the same amount of chemicals that we used last year, this year, it's 26% higher, 26% higher than it was last year. And that's, that number alone, I believe, is about $400,000, just for the chemicals in the water sewer plant. So, I'm, you know, I'm just trying to, I'm not trying to say that you're not having a difficult time. All of our prices have gone up, but the city is not immune to those prices. And the other comment that, that I want to make is, we do care. We do care. We don't get the big money to sit up here and, and ignore everybody. And believe me, this was not easy for anybody sitting at this table. And it was my first budget as, as mayor, and it was, it was disturbing and hard. I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Andy, you have anything, or you good?
I just appreciate a room full and I like the process that we go through during public hearing, so continue to come out.
We'll go to council comments. I'll start with Ms. Alton this evening.
Switching it over, just echoing the sentiments of Andy and Mayor Heath, thank you all for coming out. We do our best work when we hear from you all, and so just wanting to say thank you all, taking the time out of your evening. I know public comment isn't the easiest portion of this, but thank you all so much. And just know that we hear you. I know I hear you. I have several family members who are on fixed incomes, and this has been a spot that I've been really thinking on and emphasizing on how we can move forward as a city. And just know that this is a decision that's not just going to impact you all, it's impacting us, it's impacting our loved ones, and we are fully taking a comprehensive thought as we move forward with this budget.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
If you are healthy enough, please donate blood. Here on the Eastern Shore, we are critically low. It's very, very important. We're coming up on the summer season, where accidents are higher. You never know when you'll need it. One pint of blood can, can usually help three individuals. So please call the Delmarva Blood Bank and schedule your appointment if you can donate. Thank you.
Jackson?
Well, we're back at it again. And hearing from you all kind of had my head going ch, 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 but I felt it, and we do understand. But believe me, like they said, it's not easy. It hasn't been easy. It's not something that we want to do. And believe me, it affects me, it impacts me, believe it. I'm on a fixed income. And even sitting here is still fixed. I have kids that are grown, who are raising children. And this is going to impact them as well. It's a lot, everybody comes up with a solution, yes, and we, we hear you. And we love to hear from you, because this helps it make a little easier for us, because then we can go back and try to figure out some things, but we've got to, you know, agree to disagree and come to a compromise decision of what's going to happen here. I really want to know, and I'm going to ask, the true story about the light on Southern, on South Boulevard and Camden? Because I don't think either one of us have gotten the true story. And we're sitting here on the council, and I think that we should know what's going on as well as anybody sitting here. We need to know the true story. We need to know what is happening here. It's a lot of stuff that's been discussed with our residents and our constituents that has been profound. And a lot of this stuff has come from before, that's hitting us now, and I don't want it to affect us to where people just think we're being just rude, obnoxious, and not doing our job, because we are, but we're starting afresh. We have a fresh mayor here. We have a fresh administration. And a lot of stuff is coming beforehand. So just give us an opportunity to get this on track. Just give us that opportunity, because believe me, we don't want to fail you no more than I want to fail myself. And that is the truth. I'm about the realest you'll ever see. And when it comes to being truthful about things, I'm going to be truthful. I need, we need to know the story, and I'm going to say something else. Mr. Wisner's in here. I asked before about that Marina down there. What was the true property value? What was the real property value of that, that land? And why were we leasing it for a dollar? I never got an answer. Still, to this day, it's been over a year, two years, still have not gotten an answer. We're giving away land, and I, I feel that same pain. We're giving away, and I don't care who doesn't like what I'm saying, I'm saying it, and it's the truth. We're giving away. When we could sell it and make money, have revenue come back to our city. Thank you. Good evening.
Mrs. Gregory?
I just want to say happy Pride Month to all of our LGBTQIA friends and family out there. And we got to, I was there with Mayor Heath when they raised the pride flag, and it looked beautiful going up. Glad to see such a good turnout there. That was, that was really nice. Just want to piggyback off of what the mayor said about this budget stuff. This isn't easy for any of us, and we really, really appreciate your willingness to come out and talk and, and voice your concerns, your, your issues and that sort of thing. I know it's not easy, and, and we really, really grate, are grateful and appreciate the engagement. I really appreciate that people are paying attention. That's something that's kind of a passion of mine, and I'm, I'm very glad to see people paying attention. I do want to point out that, you know, I know Horizon has been bandied about a bit, but we have to remember we are in a housing crisis, and to get the investment in our community, we had to do something to get these bigger banks that could fund these larger projects to even pay attention to us, because they don't, they're looking at their bottom line. They're not looking at us as an east, at the Eastern Shore as somewhere that they want to invest. We have to make them want to invest in us. And I say that as someone who doesn't like tax cuts for, for big developers, but the bottom line is, is when I have people, when I ran for the seat, the number one thing I heard about was the lack of housing and how expensive housing was. And I think we, as the council, and Jack, when he was on the council, and, and, you know, when, when Jake was mayor, I think we did everything we could to make sure that we were making an impact with that, to make sure that there was housing being built. Because I don't know if you guys have looked at the price of rent, but you talk about inflation. We're paying Baltimore prices here, and we should not. And that's just simply supply and demand. There is too much demand for too little supply, and we had to do something about it. And that was one of the solutions we came up with. So that's all I'm going to say about that. As far as the South and Camden, I actually spoke to Andy. Andy was very responsive when I asked him about what was going on with that. And, and, you know, the equipment was old, and I'm hoping we can figure something out, but it does come with a very big price tag. So if you guys are not happy about the prices now, we could add another $200,000 into the You know, that's, that's, unfortunately, that's, that's the bottom line. That's, that's something we've got to consider. Hopefully, we'll be able to do something with it. I'm not sure what the plans are, but I, I know that, that they're working on it. But otherwise, just want to appreciate everybody for coming out. Thanks, guys.
Jackson, you have one other item?
Yes, I do. I went to several Memorial Day celebrations, Monday and Tuesday. It was wonderful, and I'm so glad that Wycomico County and the City of Salisbury does commemorate our fallen veterans. It was an act of bravery for them, and now that I am an auxiliary member of the VFW, I, you know, it's a sense of pride in having, not only because I am a member of the auxiliary, but because I have members of my families and friends who are veterans and have had fallen veterans in my family. So I thank everyone who sponsored any act of kindness for our fallen veterans. Thank you so much. And if you are, if you are a veteran here, I appreciate your action and your activity in serving to keep us free. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. I have a few things. Usually, meetings are so busy, I don't, and I did some of this beforehand, because I can't think sometimes during meetings. So first up on water and sewer, I just wanted to put out there, anybody who has trouble paying your water bill, you may go, you can go into the finance office where you pay your water bill and apply for the hardship fund. There are people in our community who contribute to this fund to help those who struggle with paying water bills, so those that need it, that option is there for you. Also, on, if you have trouble with paying taxes or you're concerned, I, I encourage you to go into the finance office and speak with our team, and, and they would, I'm certain, be more than happy to work with anyone, because the last thing that we want to do, we don't want to shut people's water off, we do not want to take people's houses. And.
Does that include my first, that they had that opportunity?
Yes, yes, yes. And, and there's also other organizations.
Do they have the direct bill?
Well, some, some, some renters do get the direct bill.
Not everybody.
Not everybody. Sometimes landlords do take it through their rent. I know that those that live in apartment complexes, a lot of times, that's done through another company. So I, anybody who's in an apartment complex, I encourage, talk to the office that you pay your rent at, or the company that, that you're paying for that service. I do remember I lived in Mill Pond, that's, that's how that was. On taxes, like I said, if you have trouble with that, communicate to our, our finance team, and I, I am, I am certain that, that we as a city will work with anyone, because we do not want to take anybody's home. Third, I have, just a reminder, this is, not only is it Pride Month, it is also National Safety Month. So this is to encourage people at your job, work safe, work smart, be aware of your surroundings when you're in your yard, and I have seen Ms. Gibson working in her yard sometimes. You know, if you need help, ask. If there's something that's too big, that needs two people, get a partner. If it's 100 degrees outside, as it's getting ready to be summer, make sure you take regular breaks, make sure you stay hydrated. And, and there should be days, Ms. Gibson, that you shouldn't be working in your yard when it's too hot.
I'm only eighty.
Yes. But you shouldn't be out there when it's 105 degrees. I saw you walking out in your yard one day, and it was like 105, and I'm like, what is she doing out there? Okay. So, anyway. Always be safe in everything that you do. And then last, June 24th is the Pride Parade and Festival downtown Salisbury. So that is all I have for the good of the order of the first meeting, which I will adjourn. Now we move into the work session. I will call the work session to order. Where, where are you all going?
Y'all have had enough.
Have a good evening, everyone. Please be safe.
They've had enough of us.
All right, first up, we were supposed to do this at 5:25 PM, but.
We're only slightly off course.
Yeah, slightly off course. And I hope Dr. Neil Carey is still here.
He is, he's out there.
Oh, thanks for showing up, Al. Appreciate it. Dr. Carey?
He does his own thing.
You can come up to the table here.
So we're here to discuss Ethics Commission?
Right, yes, thank you. I'm Neil Carey. This is Dr. Tim Stock. I'm the outgoing chair of the Ethics Commission. He's the incoming chair of the Ethics Commission, and so we're kind of doing a tag team here. I promise not to take.
If you could pull your microphone in front of you.
I'm sorry. I promise not to take more than a minute of your time. We were asked to kind of render an opinion about whether former and current employees can be on city boards, like commissions, committees, and so forth. And we had excellent advice from Ashley, a city attorney, and we came to the conclusion that city employees, either part-time or full-time, should not be appointed to a city board committee or commission. Former city employees can be appointed, provided there's no improper influence or appearance of improper influence. And the question came up of what about employees who are currently board members? And we, we're recommending that any current city employee sitting on a city board can finish his or her term on that board, but, but then, you know, would have to get off and could only finish the term if no conflict becomes apparent.
So that, that would be if somebody worked in field operations and was on the Parks and Rec Committee?
Yeah, or it could be even farther away from that.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think we thought that it was best just to have a blanket, you know, no crossover so there's no potential conflict of interest. I mean, I know it's hard to recruit people.
And it's to make sure that's not like an assigned member from a department to a board and a. It's different, because when we're on a board or a committee, typically, we are not a voting member.
Right.
We are the council liaison, so where we provide information when there's things coming back and forth. Same thing when there are employees who.
Department liaison.
Department liaison, but yeah, they're not part of the. Liaison, they're not a voting member, so this is specifically.
Just classification.
Yep.
Specific for those who are voting members, so.
Okay. Thank you. So is everybody okay with moving this forward?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Well, just to, just to clarify, we're, it's just.
It's just.
Notification.
Notification.
To, to, to the council so that we can make it public and let everyone know. This is, to my knowledge, the first advisory opinion that the Ethics Commission has. advisory opinion that the Ethics Commission has issued. It was presented as a question and I believe it's within their province to kind of, to make a decision on this and to advise the, the council and the city. And we will keep all of any advisory opinions. This one is number 202301 and any future ones we'll keep and it'll be on record so that there's, you know, we can refer back to them.
Now, the other question I have, and I, and I'm pretty sure it's in here, and I know I've read through some of this stuff in the past. If a city employee could not run for like mayor or city council, or serve as a city council member?
That would be-
It'd be in two different positions. You cannot have two positions at once.
You can't do that.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Okay.
This has to be added to the handbook?
Would want to.
I think it can just be maintained by Jesse and in terms of the city. I don't know-
Policy.
They just did the revision of the handbook?
Right. That's what I was going to say. We just did that. I feel like, oh, no.
And so Meg said that it would be added to the next one.
Okay.
But for the time being, it will just be a policy that's communicated verbally and something that we watch and will watch.
Okay, cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry for the delay.
That's all right. We got to chat.
Have a good evening.
Thanks.
All right. Next up is a discussion on changing, I guess, duty weapons policy. Colonel Minchin, how are you doing, sir?
Evening, everyone. Thank you for squeezing me in on the agenda. I wanted to come before you to discuss the Salisbury Police Department's transition to a new firearm platform. And what we're looking at doing is switching from a 45 caliber handgun, 45 caliber round, to a nine millimeter handgun. Hopefully you have a white paper in front of you to peruse through. I wanted to emphasize the four reasons, four primary reasons why we're looking at doing that transfer. The first one is proficiency of our officers. What we have noticed over the last several years, we have some officers that are just smaller framed, their hands are smaller, particularly the female officers. When they go to the police academy, we will lose them in the academy for, because they, it's difficult for them to maintain control of the larger frame weapon. In the academy, it's, it's very cut and dry. You get two chances, two tries at qualification. It's unfortunately, it's near the end of the academy. If you don't make it, you're out of the academy, which means if we rehire them, we have to wait usually another six, eight months before we can recycle them through. What we have noticed was, what we've done in these cases, we have purchased smaller frame handguns for, for individual officers that run into this situation. And we found that to be extraordinarily successful in retention of those officers that we would otherwise lose. We also have some officers that, that we currently have that would be a better option for them. Addition of that, the qualification scores, what we have noticed is we try to maintain a 90 percentile as far as 90%. In other words, nine out of 10 rounds that you shoot at from various range are hitting your target. That's our standard. We traditionally don't make that, that qualification. Usually our tactical members who qualify, they'll go out and shoot several times a month. Unfortunately, with our staffing the way it is and the cost of ammunition is a major concern, we get our officers out there generally twice a year. And with twice a year, we're just not making it. We're getting a lot of re-qual's, meaning officers aren't qualifying the first time out. What we have to do then is take them off the line, bring somebody in, a lot of cases for overtime until we can get them back out to range to qualify. In addition to that, if you can imagine, minimum Maryland's Police Training Commission is 70%. So I said, our goal is 90. Our Maryland Police Training Commission is 70. Well, that's a target that's not shooting back at you. Okay. So that's seven out of your, seven out of 10 rounds hit a target at various range that's not shooting back. So you can imagine under a stressful environment where there is an individual and assailant that may be firing back, that proficiency goes down in the, into the teens. We've had, we've had experience over this through the last 35 years. I know a couple instances where our own officers have been involved in incidents and other agencies and that, that holds true. So the more you can train, the more you can, the more time you can get out on the range is, is paramount. So the next one is liability and that really comes, runs hand in hand with proficiency. Obviously, if you can create a situation where your officers are better equipped to handle the platform that they're shooting and they're more proficient at it, it's going to reduce, greatly reduce the city's liability if we get a situation where, God forbid, we're in a situation like that and things don't go the way you're, you want them to. And an innocent bystander where he get hurt, property damage, life is at stake. So that's another reason why we want to move to this, this particular platform. It's technology based as well. 30 years ago, a nine millimeter round is not the same nine millimeter round that we're looking at 30 years later. It's a, it's a, there's no sacrifice in technology wise going to the smaller frame gun and the smaller frame ammo. It's a, it's a, it's a round that we can move to without sacrificing any, any technology or anything that we would be worried about as far as impact of that round to a, to a target that we're trying to hit. The cost saving, I can tell you that the 45 caliber round is a round that the military uses quite often. And we are looking at over a year backlog on some of this ammo that we're trying to purchase. So when the budget struck in July, there's a certain amount of money that's set aside for ammo. If we were to order 45 caliber ammo in July, it will be basically a year or longer before we see most of those rounds coming in. So we're always trying to order a year in advance. Nine millimeter is not the case. It's an, it's a, it's a round that's more readily available. It's also a lot less expensive. We anticipate moving to the nine millimeter would save the city, save us about $10,000 a year. So this is a program that, looking at the upfront costs, we would recoup a lot of this cost over the, over the term, over the two or three year period. Also with some of the, with the officers, as we mentioned, recruiting and retention is, what we're seeing is a lot of allied agencies are moving to the smaller, another platform, the smaller platform. And this is something that our younger officers are looking at retention. They're looking at the equipment that, that other agencies are carrying. And it does become a retention and recruiting tool for us as well. So we want to, not only does it make sense in all the other areas I mentioned, it's also, it's also for us for recruiting retention. I'd be glad to answer any question. Oh, I did want to mention that the, the weapons that we have now would be, would be traded in. So we would recoup quite a bit of the cost from, from the, from the weapons, trading them in for the, for the new weapons. So it, it would offset quite a bit. And we're not, we're not asking for any money other than what we have in surplus. So we, we can pay for this project out of surplus funds that we have and not, not dip into any other sources, revenue sources to purchase it. Glad to answer any questions, if you may.
Questions or comments?
Well, I do have a comment. It's the savings. And you're talking, you're speaking about accuracy as far as using the weapon to fire maybe someone or whatever. And then it helps a lot in our hiring process because if they can get through the class, they can be hired. So it's a plus.
Yes. We, we have a lot of folks that come to us that, believe it or not, have never, although we get some military folks that obviously have firearms background and some civilians that also have it. But a lot of officers we hire don't have firearms experience. They don't, some of them have never picked up a handgun before they go to the police academy. We always try to get them out to the range ahead of that so to prepare them for what they're going to be facing in the academy. But this is a platform that is much easier to handle. The site, the holographic site picture that, that comes with this particular model gun is, is just a much easier weapon to handle and for, especially for inexperienced shooters.
Last question or two. Okay. So how much is the, the nine millimeter gun versus the 45?
To outfit 90 officers, which is basically what we're looking at, would cost about, about, I don't have the exact figure, but about $43,000.
How much is the ammo?
The ammo-
For the nine mil?
To outfit, for, to do the initial qualification, so in others, when we buy new rounds or a new weapons, you have to do an initial qualification. So we wouldn't be able to trade our old guns in until obviously we get qualified with new. So that, I think we're budgeted for about $10,000 for that.
And do we know what the, the trade-in rate is for the 45?
The trade-in, if we trade 90, would be about $30,000. That's, could fluctuate. It's about 310, 320 dollars per weapon right now, but that does fluctuate somewhat. Just to make sure that I wanted to let you know, there are other, this isn't a net, this isn't going to cost some money because there are holsters, there are new holsters that you can't use the same holster. So that's around 10,000 to 15,000. And there are sites that we have to purchase. And we have some sites we could trade in. But there is, there would be an initial expense to the city. It would take us a few years to recoup as far as the ammo transition. We also have quite a bit of, I can get you more detailed information if you like that, because I can tell you, we have quite a bit of 45 caliber ammunition in, in stock now that's come in through the years that we would also be trading, trading in. So that would offset quite a bit as well.
And how soon would you be looking to do this?
Our goal would be, if this is, if we get the clear for this, would be by the end of the calendar year. I know that sounds a ways off, but we have to order the weapons. We have to surplus the old weapons and then we also have to qualify with the new weapons. So we think we can get it done before that, but just to set realistic goals for ourselves, we would, we're shooting for the end of the calendar year. We think we can get it done sooner than that, but that's our goal.
So would we need a budget modification for this, for the holsters and the-
No.
He is, the, the funding has been identified in their current budget right now. So they would not need to, we just wanted to make sure we came to you, letting everybody know what was going on, but the, we're not going to be asking a budget amendment to use a surplus that is found within the current budget.
I wanted, yes, I wanted a time just to explain it to you. So when the surplus of the old weapons comes to you, you'll know what's going on without asking those questions.
Hey, we're going to surplus 90 weapons.
Right.
We're disbanding.
Exactly. There, there's a lot of reasons this makes sense for us, but at some point we will be disposing of our surplus of the old weapons. And I didn't, you know, I wanted to come to you and tell you what's, what's going on with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate the transparency.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Al. They're, they're not going to qualify you to carry. So, okay. All right. Next up is discussion on South and Camden traffic light.
Rick, you going to come up? We're going to talk about this. Yep. Oh, Rick. Rick, sorry. I was looking right behind you.
You were looking at me.
And Mike, Mike, you can-
Yes, come and join us.
I mean-
You know I'm-
Yeah, Mike.
Yes, Lord. It wasn't a bad one. Miss Braden, that wasn't a bad one.
We were going to bring Lynn up to sit beside him.
Look, we're getting between you two. Move overseas.
All right, Rick.
Put her in the middle.
So we added this on the council agenda because of everything that was going on. And some people already, on the council have already brought it up in, in some of their comments. But Mike's here, Rick's here, I'm here. We can have a dynamic discussion on what's going on. I know we were talking to certain people, but we wanted to be transparent, let everybody know where we are, what the plan is, and just kind of have a back and forth. So understanding how we got here and what the plan moving forward is now that we have an opportunity to talk about this. So some of the items that were already brought up by council members and the public were why the transition from a, a working traffic light to a stop sign. And then where are we now after going through a couple of different iterations to a temporary four-way stop that we plan on making a permanent four-way stop at that intersection. And there's been some discussions on the cost of going back to a four-way traffic signal. There's also some safety precautions that must happen along the way with the flashing red lights to alert people of, of a traffic pattern change. And then we would ultimately go to a four-way stop sign with LED lights around it to keep it very highly visible. The rumble strips have been removed and will not be going back. So that, that was a temporary stopgap to help alert people to a new traffic pattern. But once they serve their purpose, we've removed those. It was kind of an in and out pretty quickly, but we saw that the need for them was no longer necessary. But the details on some of the testing and some of the evaluation of that intersection was done by Rick's team. So I've brought Rick and Mike are here to answer some more of the technical stuff. And anything that they can't provide for you right now can be sent over in more detailed analytics. I don't think they brought with them graphs and charts and some of that stuff. So.
All right, Rick. Where would you like us to start? Maybe a little bit, a little bit of history. Okay. Rick, can you move your mic over? Is that better? Oh, yeah. Terrific. There's a process called a warrant analysis, which takes data on the intersection, both the count of traffic, the traffic turns left and right from each direction and the speed of traffic. That warrant analysis is then compared against federal highway standards, not set by the city. They're national standards that determine what's appropriate for control of the intersection. Warrant analyses have been done on the intersection more than once, prior to COVID, during COVID and since COVID. The COVID data was looked at as an anomaly, but it was lower, which would be easy to understand. And the warrant analysis shows that at, at least to the federal standards, the traffic light wouldn't be appropriate in that location. The federal guidelines do say though, that, you know, the people that are doing the analysis, the traffic engineers can look at that and make other decisions or exceptions. So it's not, it's more of a should than a shall in some of those regulations around the warrant analysis. The light that has been there and come to a couple of these meetings, and I appreciate it's been there probably about as long as I've been around. And I'm getting a little creaky and, and older. And those traffic lights and several others in the city of that same era are now obsolete. We cannot get parts for them. We can't. So the traffic staff has, where there are other lights of this type around the city, and they've been coming down and going into four-way stops as well, have been cannibalizing parts to keep the lights going, keep them operating. This light was struck along with five others on a Friday evening, some, some pretty significant storms not too far back. And what that did was knock out the controller. The controller is what manages changing, you know, yellow, green, red, cycling and running through. Thankfully, we've got some talented folks on staff that work with signals and were able to get it at least to a flashing condition. So when it first went on flash as yellow and red, they were pleased with that accomplishment. We're still facing the warrant analysis situation. So we know that things are going to begin to progress and change, or at least that's what's anticipated. More recently to, you know, as Andy was saying, moving to flashing, certainly there were a lot of issues and concerns about operating through that intersection. So the rumble strips, you know, were intended to bring speed down on Camden, which is a problem. Those signs that are out there now that show you the speed, they are also recording. They're taking data. So we will have more information to work with on what are the speeds along there, what are, what, how is, what is the conduct of the drivers and operators. We'll take that into consideration as we continue to move forward. Sightline is very important. And I don't have my folder that's got some of the state laws written in it. But as you're a driver approaching a, an intersection or any stop sign, you're to stop behind the stop bar that's painted there. And if you do, you can't see around that retaining wall and you can't see around that hedge in order to make a left-hand turn safely. You could make a right in that location pretty safely because you can see that flow of traffic that you would be moving into and readily navigate that. But the law does allow and or expect you to ease forward. So you can't ease forward into the crosswalks when there's a person there, but you can ease forward so that you can see. Once again, there's a federal standard for intersections based on speed, type of service, et cetera, that shows exactly how far you have to be able to see down the line in order, just the sightline, which is like a triangle. So we did go out about 6:00 AM. So we weren't interfering with two- So we did go out about 6:00 AM, so we weren't interfering with too many people, and put markers out there and go through and make sure that we could confirm again that the sightlines are there, but you do need to ease up in order to be able to see it. I'm not a frequent driver of Camden and South Avenue, but I've driven it much more here recently. The first few times that I approached it, I know that this is an intersection that's a problem, and it's an intersection that I'm not familiar with. So I drove much like I would if I'm outside of where I typically drive with a fair amount of caution. And it's easy to understand if this has been an intersection you've driven through quite a bit, maybe you don't approach it in quite the same manner. Let's see if what we've covered, we've covered a little bit about the warrant analysis, the sightlines, the working traffic light, replacing with a new traffic light. The, the cost figures are extremely high. In the state of Maryland, there was, or nationally, there are only two suppliers of controllers and equipment for traffic signals in its entirety. There's only one supplier, Econolite, that supplies state of Maryland. So, you know, it's not that they have us over a barrel, but that equipment is extremely expensive to up, upgrade, update to what are the current standards, and that is what's available on the market. So the figure is in the 200 to 250,000 dollar range. The existing poles that are there that are carrying the lights would come down, the lights would come down. We would like to move away from, there's quite a few overhead wires in that intersection, and put up new poles. Well, the foundations on those new poles by state standards and requirements go down 12 feet. They're, they're expensive in and of themselves, we don't really have much choice. And then the controller equipment, the lights, and the cameras now. You see so many intersections that have cameras up on the, up on the pole, you know? Don't want to persuade anybody, you know, lots of people think that they're to make sure you're not running a red light, but what they're doing is actually controlling the intersection, and they are attached to a computer. That computer is looking at how many cars are coming, at what speed, from what direction, and are making adjustments to the timing of that intersection. There are some other technologies that we can look at that are, there are multiple vendors in the country, and we've used some of that in locations. We can reduce the sitting time at the intersections down to about 10 seconds in some cases, so you don't spend as, as long there. That's an, that's an additional expense above the 250,000 budgetary figure that you've heard from staff so far. Maybe I should pause there, make sure of covering the items that you do want to hear about or discuss tonight.
Real quick, Rick, if we were to go into that four-way traffic light, a time from today to when would that even be able to be fully outfitted? Rough guess, safe guess?
You know, you've had so much discussion about budget, and an item of that magnitude is not in the current budget. The timeline could be a year, plus the lead time for procurement after July 1 of 2024. It could be that worst case. You know, then working to find other solutions or alternatives, be creative, our staff spends quite a bit of time doing that and working with other departments to reduce those types of answers. We have not done that yet.
But not weeks, probably months from procurement to budget amendments to even putting in infrastructure and procuring all of that stuff. So tomorrow, I, it wouldn't have.
A good example is we're still waiting for the hardware for a parkside light, that's been months.
Now, my question to you all, why was this not communicated to the community before it started, before you even had to do anything? And I think, and I'm, and not blaming you in particular, but I really feel that the communities that these changes are coming in, the community should have some knowledge of what's going on before it actually happens, because when it happens, yes, they're going to be angry. I can't, I couldn't blame them from being, not being upset. It, I think it's just the way it's communicated, it's not being communicated properly to the people who's going to be affected by it the most. So that's my only issue with this is if it's going to be done, and you know it has to be done, communicate with the people who actually are being affected by this the most. I mean, was it put online?
That's, that's our issue, that's not Rick's.
Okay, no, I'm just asking the question.
Yell at us.
I'm just asking the question. Was it put online?
I think we announced that there was a change, we did not give the detailed backstory of the why, and I think if you want to cast blame, cast it this way, we did not ask for that level of analysis to be shared, and then we were in the mixed, midst of it. We, we felt comfortable with the reasoning behind all of that and knew why we wanted to do this, because we had all that information, but as this became more of a public concern and people were talking about it, we, we addressed the intersection, and then that's why this is on the agenda to talk to everybody about it. Maybe it's a little bit late, but we, it needed to happen, it won't happen again like this.
And I've said it before, I've said it numerous of times, when we do things in these districts and in our communities, I think it should be, you, you, how can we continue to keep doing things when we're not talking to the people who are affected by it?
I agree with you.
That's my point, that's my main point. I, I just feel as though we should give the people in the, the district leaders, representatives, and the residents, the constituents, the opportunity to know firsthand.
All right, I'm going to step outside of the norm. Ms. Bratton, if I don't let you speak, I know you're going to explode.
She's going to explode back there.
As a leader in that neighborhood.
She has a jumping bean back there.
She's ready. Put her in, coach.
Lynn Bratton. Okay. The light worked. It wasn't broken. It didn't have to be fixed. In one of the press releases, it was even said that it was damaged in the process of putting it onto Blink. And now you're saying the reason it had to be fixed in the first place was because it was broken. Now that's the problem I'm having, it wasn't, it was working, you put up the sign saying this is going to go to a four-way stop, or it's going to do something, and at that point, I started raising a little bit of stink about it because it didn't seem to be needed. It was working. It worked. I went, went through it that day, and it was still red, green, and yellow. I go through it about four to six times a day because I have family in Off Riverside Drive. I'm up and down that one all the time, and I've lived in that neighborhood for over 50, well, I'm 71, yeah, almost 50 years. I've lived there, and I traveled it as a little girl with my family from Princess Anne because it was the main drag, kind of back then Camden was what daddy would call the main drag. So I've been on that street a lot of years, and I know it's old, but I'm old. You going to get rid of me?
Lynn, we would miss you at these meetings.
I, I, I bring some humor, okay, and a lot of institutional knowledge, and I feel like that.
Lynn, could you do me a favor?
Stop.
No, just move your mic back. There you go.
I have, I have.
Because you, you, you really.
I have a teacher voice, I don't even need the mic.
I know, don't I know?
And the man back there in the back room also knows that.
His, his hair, do you remember? Okay.
My concern is it wasn't broken, and I don't know why Vision Zero decided that that was an intersection that didn't need to have a stoplight. There was also a notation that the Corps of Engineers, the Army Corps of Engineers, sent out a survey. Do you have that data? That was quoted in the press release, that the Army Corps of Engineers stated that that intersection had perfectly good sight lines. I, I don't know that the Army Corps of Engineers has ever done a study on traffic at a stoplight in Salisbury, maybe they have, I just didn't know.
I will look that up, that one did not come from me.
Well, that, that was in the press release.
Oh, the most recent one?
That was in a press release.
In the most recent one, yes, there is an Army Corps of Engineer calculator online, that's the basis of where the requirements are, so that is what sets the sightline distance.
But that's just a report, it wasn't like the Army Corps of Engineers were physically at that intersection looking at things.
No, we can't get them in time for the bigger problems we have.
But no, it wasn't broken, I still don't know why, you're saying that there was five lights in the city, and they all went off, and then you all got them back on, and because of that, you had to come and, and mess with ours, because in another one of the press releases, it says that there was a, a, a problem with, it basically said somebody did something to it. I don't remember the exact words, but it was also inferring that it got broken in the process of putting it on Blink.
Go back through and talk with staff. The best that I do recall is that in the process of making the transition for the intersection, which didn't happen overnight, from announcement to when it was changed, that the storm event I was referencing occurred in the midst of that timeline.
I don't have the data, so I can't dispute that, but I know it was working the day you turned it off.
I'll speak to the operators.
If it was working the day you turned it off, it ought to be able to work again. That's my point.
If we could turn it back on, I believe the two gentlemen sitting to my left would say, get that back on or don't come in tomorrow.
Let's get the, do you remember the other hearing when I was here, when we were here back in May? And the gentleman said there were electricians that were certified and da-da-da, and we no longer have that level of expertise in our, in our budget and on our staff. Not questioning any of your good people, I'm sure you have good people, but you need the people that know how to keep the old stuff working.
Yeah, we had to cut that position from the budget this year.
That position's gone, but we have homeless people walking around, the homeless coordinators. So I'm just saying, I'm, I'm a little evil, and I'm a little angry, and I'm a little tired of creeping out in that intersection and seeing people blow through it even with a four-way stop. They, they don't understand one behind the other. Like you stop, and the car right behind them stops, so when this car goes, they think they can go too. They don't understand, take your turn, like you learned in kindergarten, you know, there's a saying, everything you need to know, you learned in kindergarten, and that's one of those sayings, right, Ms. Angela? You've probably seen a poster.
Indeed. Indeed. I do have a, I do have a question about the light. I, I know that there's been several lights around town, like say for instance on Truitt Street, there was a light taken down near Truitt and Church. And there was that nice fancy stop, and that was a nice transition, it was a beautiful transition, and I traveled that to go to one of the schools up that way. And, but the difference I feel between that particular four-way versus the one on South Boulevard is the sightline, because it is, you can see clearly in every direction there. There's not, there's not even, even on Fridays when there's trash pickup, the trash cans don't even block the sight. So my concern is for this particular four-way stop, I, I would like the light back, I want to advocate for the light back because of the dynamics of that particular corner. I, I have been here 35 years myself, and I drive that area also frequently, and I tell you, I'm, I'm five feet tall. Now, on a humid day, I could be five, three, or four, my hair grows, only humid, humid. Humidity can, but that doesn't help with my eyes. So I'm going to sit low in any vehicle, and I cannot see, and I just feel like, one doesn't fit all, one size doesn't fit all when making traffic decisions. I just think that that particular four-way stop with those particular dynamics between the, the brick wall and that, that huge thick hedgerow, I do, I do think there, there should be a light.
If I could, just, I drive that all the time, that's my main, that's my main route home. I would agree with you, if the stop, the stop line was, was back further, but where the stop line is, as long as drivers stop at a stop sign, which is part of the problem, if they do that and you pull up to your stop line, you can see the, the car over there clearly, and you can also, if you're coming towards Route 13, you can see the car coming from the right, if you go up to the stop line. If you don't go up to the stop line and stop further back, that's, that could be an issue. But where it is, where the line is going to be, you can see, because I, I agree with the sightline thing from before. I've, I've driven it and I made my comments about it. I actually told Rick, turn the light back on. Right?
Sure.
Okay. And he explained why we couldn't, and I said, okay. If, just give it time to see when you go there, if people are paying attention. Now, there was an accident there, by the way, and chiefs or colonels here, there was an accident when it was just blinking red. One of those, there were three, one of them was a rear ender.
I believe that one was on Camden.
Yes. That was on Camden, it was a rear ender. So that had nothing to do with the four-way stop sign. That had somebody who wasn't paying attention driving to the back of somebody's car. We can't control every driver, the driver has to have some responsibility to it. So I, I'm saying, if it doesn't work out and we still have issues, I, I would be all for putting it in. Right now, I mean, 200, $250,000 is another, is another.
Well, we also knew the price of the replacement too before we started with whatever we were doing with it. At this point, I don't know what was, I don't know who did what, when, with the, I don't know, and I don't even care, to be honest, at this point, because I don't, I don't know if we'll ever know, or whatever's going on with the light. The bottom line is, sometimes I think even the council gets frustrated with the planning of things, and knowing that this light is significantly aged, knowing that we were changing a pattern, knowing that whatever, I just think that there's a piece of planning too that might have been, yeah, it's expensive, and so are the things at the water treatment plant, and so are the things, and we have people that are planning, we need to do better planning. Just, just a side thought.
I agree.
Speaking of driver safety, I mean, even anywhere I go, I look both ways down a one-way street. That's just.
Well, that's true, because I can tell you that four-way stop on Nellie Road is a catastrophe, so, and, and people do not know how to drive, because if I can remember, if you hit the light, I mean, hit the four-way stop at the same time, the person at the right has the right of way, but everybody else doesn't see it that way, so.
Unless, unless it's the mailman.
You're right, you're right, you're right.
The mailman always has the right of way at that four-way stop.
But I'm just saying, so, it could be a, a number of things that have caused accidents, because accidents are everywhere. And I don't know if it's a stop sign, but if, I'm like Angela, if it helps, because that is an older community, that is a much older community, and those people are, they're older, so, I mean, they're used to what they're used to, and, and that's just point blank, but it's common sense, and it's a, Camden Avenue is a busy throwaway to me, it's constant. Yeah, yeah, well, I'm just saying. No.
So, do we have any, any other input on this? Other than, I do want everybody to take note that I remembered something from 34 years ago from driver's ed. All right.
Yes.
Good for you. Just, I think out of the conversations and discussions we've had today, including this one, but the entirety of, of this meeting is transparency is becoming increasingly more important with our community. I know that this is a priority that the city's starting to set, however, I just want to reemphasize, I would like to see that be brought up to our community a bit sooner. That being said, I want to commend Andy and Jack because I know that in the coming weeks, I think I called them up multiple times a day, I'm sure they were tired of seeing my name pop up on their phone. However, they answered my calls and texts every single time, and they were as transparent with the process as they could be as I was handling constituent calls and messages as they were concerned with this traffic change. So I just want to thank you both for working with me as we were trying to make sure that my constituents stayed informed, so thank you. So thank you.
All right, are we, are we good? Ready to move on? All right, thank you all for coming. Thank you for...
Thank you.
Thanks, Ricky and Mike.
Thank you, Ms. Bratton. Appreciate it.
Thanks, girl.
She's pouting.
Oh, I mean...
Are you pouting?
No.
She's looks, she's deep in thought.
Oh, you're deep.
No, I just don't think we can get the right answer. The thing wasn't broken. They decided to turn it off.
Thank you. All right, so next up is accepting a donation from the Delmarva Zoological Society for the Andean Bear Campaign.
Hello, Ellen.
No wonder I can't see.
Good evening.
Hello.
Much lighthearted conversation coming up next.
This is a fun one.
This is a fun one, yes.
So, thank you for your time today, everybody. As you know, the steering committee for the Andean Bear Campaign has been working diligently to get this off the ground. And we ran into two services that we were looking to provide for the next phases of the campaign. One is implementation of a web-based software that's capable of managing and tracking the revenues for the upcoming bear campaign. That way, we're not working off Excel sheets and we talk transparency. This is a great thing to have online so people can actually see where we stand in the campaign process. As well, we are looking to, you know, the architectural firm for the redesign of that campaign. So they'll produce the design, they'll produce the total cost. That's what allows us to go through the public phase of the campaign. So we approached the Delmarva Zoological Society for a donation of $125,000 to offset those costs, and they generously would like to donate that to the city.
Thank you. And I'm, of course, will accept it, and that's fantastic. I think that's wonderful that we have great partnerships like that and people who are interested in these types of endeavors. And it just, it's, it's wonderful. Thank you.
It's exciting to see a re-energized atmosphere around the zoo. I'm excited to see the work that you all are putting into it, so thank you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Love it.
See you.
I'm fine with it.
This is the easy part of the meeting, so...
It is, and I think, you know, once again, you know, recognizing the importance of the zoo to our community, to our region, again, it's still one of the few, if not the only, free zoos in the country. They do an extraordinary amount of work over the years of rescuing eagles and are a big part of the, you know, the eagles coming back. They, they have bred successfully Andean bears that go around the country. And we have some rare ducks and animals in our region that allow us to be able to get animals from, and swap. So it does an extraordinary amount of work, education to our community and our schools. So, you know, we appreciate all the help we can get for the zoo, and this is incredible. So we have consensus to move this forward?
Sure. Money?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen.
Credit for bringing money to the table tonight, too. All right, so next up is discussion on a resolution to appoint a new registered agent. Not a secret agent, sir, it's a registered agent. You get all the, everything.
Yeah, I'd let Ashley take this one. Ms. Boucher.
Yes, all municipalities have to have a current resident agent. The city's is Julia Glan, so we need to update that to Mr. Kitzrow.
I saw that document.
I mean, only if I'm in trouble.
Mister, mister.
All right, we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
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 All right.
Yes.
Thank you, so we...
He's not sure, but still, the trial basis.
All right, so we will adjourn, and we will convene in special meeting number two. All right. So at this time, I will call special meeting number two to order. I will entertain a motion to adopt a legislative agenda for special meeting number two.
So moved.
Second. That was a good one.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. All right, we have an award of bids. Ms. Miller, is she out in the hall?
Ms. Miller? No, not Ms., um, not Ms. Bratton. She's not here.
Not here. So, Mr. Kitzrow?
Yep.
You're up.
You got it. Give me one quick second. I just had this up. So with the award of bid... Mike, you want to jump in too?
Yeah.
So Mike and I will tag team this. This award of bid is for the parking operations improvements at the parking garage, Circle Parking Garage. Looking to upgrade the infrastructure there into automation in addition. So there's several different pieces that are included in that automation, but this is awarding that bid to the vendor. There she is. Oh.
Hello.
That's all right. Yeah, we're so quick. We are, if you'd like to drop your bags. And Mike, you probably have the hot seat now.
I was watching the...
I just got comfortable.
Show from downstairs, I apologize. Okay.
All right, you're up.
Thank you, everybody. This is the award of bid for invitation to bid number ITB 23-122. This is the parking operations improvement. So this was for the Department of Field Operations, the Parking Division. This is for updated entry and exit hardware and software to optimize the parking experience within downtown Salisbury. We will be piggybacking on a Sourcewell contract, contract number 080321-PRK. That bid was posted by Sourcewell on June 15th of 2021. The contract maturity date is October 7th of 2025. Per the authority of the Salisbury Charter, Section SC 16-3A.9, which is the general policy of competitive bidding exceptions, that states that competitive bidding is not necessary or appropriate in the following circumstance: contracts in which the city receives a contract price negotiated by the state, county, or other governmental entity pursuant to a valid contract. Now, the City of Salisbury is a participating agency with Sourcewell, a service cooperative created by the Minnesota Legislature as a local unit of government, which is governed by local elected municipal officials and school board members. The vendor is Parkion, doing business as Flowbird from Moorestown, New Jersey. The total cost for the first year is $150,000 for the hardware and software, and then we're looking at about $21,120 total in back office and connectivity fees for years two through five. That's total. The GL account noted in your packet would be fully funded upon council's approval of ordinance 2794.
Any questions or comments from the council?
None.
Now, this is the same Flowbird, we have that with our current parking meters. So it'll all be in the same system?
Yes.
Correct, okay.
So is the attempt to move out that booth, is that the, okay. Great.
Questions or comments? Everybody okay with this item? Next item?
That's all for me.
Oh, that's it?
Motion and second.
Poor Mear thought he was never getting out of here.
Oh, I want to entertain a motion and a second to approve the award of bids.
So moved.
Second. Who did it?
Angela. Yes.
All those in favor of approving the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yeah. Opposed? And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Thank you.
Thank you for waiting all evening for that one item.
Thank you.
Jack said you could take a half a day tomorrow.
I'll talk to you later.
He's going to fill in for you. That's what's going to happen.
Entertain a, I want to entertain a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2810.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Boucher.
Back again. Ordinance number 2810, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the city's budget to accept and appropriate donated funds from the Delmarva Zoological Society, Inc., for the Andean Bear Campaign. Whereas the City of Arts, Business, and Culture Department and the Delmarva Zoological Society, Inc., known as DZS, is preparing for the launch of the Andean Bear Campaign to benefit the Salisbury Zoo. And whereas DZS wishes to donate up to $125,000 to the City of Salisbury to launch the Andean Bear Campaign, and whereas up to $25,000 of the donated funds will be used to onboard a web-based software capable of managing and tracking revenues for the campaign, and whereas $100,000 of the donated funds will be used for the recruitment of an architectural firm to redesign the Andean Bear exhibit. And whereas appropriations necessary for this donation must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of four-fifths of the council. Section 1 of ordinance 2810 reads as follows: The city's general capital project B, and hereby is amended as follows: 1. Increase account number 980245642329051, contribution revenue by $125,000. 2. Increase 2812351302629051, engineering by $100,000. And 3. Increase 9812357703629051, computer software by $25,000.
Questions or comments?
None.
All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2810 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. Thank you, that is...
We have someone who wants to ask a question. Is that still an option right now?
Sure. Yes.
I know this is out on the... Is there any chance, I was at an HAGA board meeting and wasn't able to speak earlier? Would it be possible to share?
Sure.
Comment?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
I'm going to read it because I have a tendency to go off track. It's from teaching kindergarten forever. Mayor Heath and members of the city council, my name is Sharon DeShiel, and I live on Russell Avenue, one house in from West College. You know what's coming. I didn't realize until recently I could address the city council, and I thank you for this opportunity. I have two issues I would like to share my thoughts on. First, it may seem like old news, but the changes that have occurred on our city streets for bikers for the sake of safety, in my opinion, are a mess. Fitzwater and Waverly are old news, and the most recent undertaking, Carroll Street, is really confusing. One entire lane on the east side between Circle Avenue and Riverside Circle is a lane that goes nowhere. And twice last week, a car drove down it and had to back up. Then the next two east-side lanes between Circle Avenue and South Division are striped off. All of the space not available to cars creates a backup on a daily basis back to the hospital. It's all very confusing, and I can't imagine the emergency vehicles maneuvering these changes. That brings me to my corner of the world, West College Avenue. You must have put every suggestion from Vision Zero on West College from Route 13 to Riverside Drive. I'm asking each of you to drive across this intersection of Russell Avenue and West College, going on Russell. Your city vehicles do so with great trepidation. I might add, and see if you don't agree, that after two or three failed attempts, it is still in need of being fixed properly. I would be very interested to know how many drivers have been reimbursed with our tax money having hit the concrete obstructions that have been put in place. My neighbors that live right on College estimate that to about 50 cars at least. The latest correction is a dip, according to the signage on Russell Avenue. A dip, by my definition, doesn't damage the undercarriage of your car, it doesn't damage your tires, and it doesn't have bikers falling off their bikes. This is definitely a safety issue. Please do something about it. My first concerns that I just mentioned go into my second one about the budget. I'm happy to accommodate bikers, but why are all of these changes to our streets a priority for bikers? I bike, I've managed to bike years before all these adjustments. I don't know if all of this work is covered by grant money. If so, my hat goes off to you. We have a lot of potholes in this city. We have inadequate lighting, which is one of the Vision Zero concerns, and on some streets, there are no lights. There are pressing needs in this community. Based upon the last two council meetings I have attended, apparently a lot of money has been given away by the city council over the past few years in various forms without considering, apparently, a realistic budget, or we wouldn't be in the situation that we are in right now. Some suggestions come to mind. Have you all met with the county council to address concerns that were shared in the last few meetings regarding the fire department and double taxing? If so, congratulations, my hat goes off to all of you. It's not an easy task. Is there a way to revisit existing incentives? That seems to be a tremendous issue in our budget. Funding the Folk Festival is a lovely gesture. It's a lovely event, but it seems to me we need to prioritize real budget needs for our city and the expenses, because many arrangements made during COVID years may longer, may no longer be viable and need to be reevaluated. My hat goes off to Councilwoman Jackson. Thank you. I believe in communication. I think that has gone by the wayside in many areas, probably because of the Zoom meetings, et cetera, et cetera, that were put in place. So I thank you for those thoughts on communication and putting us in the loop. A final suggestion that may address this issue of communication is having a forum, maybe every six months. Not everyone can make council meetings, and if taxpayers don't show up to a forum to find out what's going on, shame on them. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And with that, yes, ma'am?
I am a neighbor of Sharon, and I just wanted a quick comment about the award of West College Avenue Council.
Yes.
This is originally why I came tonight. I wasn't sure when I was supposed to speak about it, so my apologies. So I own a property on West College, right at the corner of Russell Street, and had no notice of what was going to happen to that corner. The, the structures that were installed to curb the traffic of West College, great concept, not so sure about the execution. There were steps taken, and I think they've been effective in preventing, helping reducing the number of people that are hitting those, those structures that were put in place. But then the dip that appeared on Russell Street at that intersection on both sides is tremendous, and I, I need to know what's going to be done, what steps would be taken. I presume a lot of money has already been spent on that intersection, but errors were made. Communication was not happening between the contractors or the plan. Something went awry, and I'd like to know what's going to happen to correct it, because it's really, I don't know any place in the city that's as bad as that particular corner with that particular issue. So I will be following up with whomever I need to, to find that out. Is there someone I can follow up with? Great, I'll do that. Thank you so much, I appreciate you giving me the time.
After the meeting, if you want to leave information with Mr. Kitzrow, we will...
I'm Christina Pacalas Maza from Salisbury. Thank you. Yes, I will. Thank you.
With that, we are adjourned.